Good evening and welcome to this edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. Yes, it's that time. The candidate forums have begun. It's a chance for you to find out about the people that are in contested races on the ballot this November. This November, you have a chance to pick your elected officials, but only if you register to vote. So let's start there. Voter registration is open, continues to be open until October 9th, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. Voter Registration, 301 East Main Street. Or, it's easy. That thing in your pocket that you carry around? Just go on that. Go to indiana-voters.com. You can check your voter registration. You can register to vote. If you're in front of your tablet, your computer, you don't even have to leave the front of the television to get this one done. So go on, get checked, get registered to vote, and be ready to vote this November. It is actually very important. The folks that we will be introducing you to over the next number of weeks have a chance to affect what happens in your local schools, what happens in the local communities, and what happens at the State House. So please, take the time, get registered, find out what these folks are thinking, and please, feel free to, during these shows, let us know questions that you want asked of them, and we will do that. If you want to get registered to vote, you don't like doing that over-the-phone thing, or you can't get to the voter registration office. Voter registration is actually taking place at the Richmond Farmers Market from 8 until 12 on Saturdays through September 29th. Your vote counts, so that's another place where you can get registered to vote. I mentioned that this is the first of a series of InFocus Candidate Forums. Next week, we'll be talking with candidates running for the Town Council in Fountain City. Then we've set aside a couple of weeks for school board races, about three weeks possible for school board races. We know that there will be a race in the northeastern Wayne District. We know that there will be at least one race in the Nettle Creek School District. And tomorrow at noon, is the filing deadline, we'll be able to fill in exactly when the rest of those are going to happen, and we'll let you know that on our social media sites and next week here on InFocus. Then we get into the 6th Congressional District on October 4th, Indiana State Representative, District 56. Then we'll wrap it up with County Council, District 3, Indiana State Senate, District 27, and then our Election Night Special. We will be here live from the time the polls close at 6 o'clock until we have all of the votes in for Wayne County, just for Wayne County. And we'll pass those results along to you. And during that evening, hopefully, we'll talk to some of the candidates that were on the ballot. We'll talk to the party chairs and others to kind of keep you updated as to what's going on. That's the background on that. This evening, we open up with candidates running for a seat on the Hagerstown Town Council. There are actually two positions open. There are three people running. Two of those folks are here. We thank them for spending their time with us. I'm joined by Brian Ballinger, who is with the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. He is actually Chair of the Issues and Advocacy Committee. Thanks for taking the time.
Yes.
We're going to open this up and give you gentlemen a chance to introduce yourselves. So we'll start with you, Alan.
My name's Alan Bullock, longtime resident of Hagerstown, Indiana. Graduated from Hagerstown in 2010, so it's my lifetime home. I enjoy the community. Just got married this past July, the 21st. Started school just a few weeks ago as a high school teacher. This is my third year at the Hagerstown High School doing that job. And this is my fourth opportunity, running for, or in, the running for a Hagerstown Town Council seat. So hopefully, fourth time, as they say, is a charm.
All right. Brian.
My name's Brian Longbonds, and I have, my wife and I have raised our children and have lived in Hagerstown for a little over 25 years. Our children both graduated from Hagerstown High School. I currently own a business here in Richmond, Indiana. I am just now completing, or will be completing, setting on Hagerstown Town Council for six years.
Okay. This is, as I mentioned, interactive. Feel free to give us a call. Phone number will come up on the screen. You can also send a question via Twitter or via Facebook, 973-8587. Tweet us @WCTVinfo, or send us a comment or question on Facebook. Questioning starts here.
Okay. It's nice to see both of you this evening, and we appreciate your willingness to participate in the forum, but also a desire to represent your local town. Hagerstown has the Town Council representative. So again, want to thank you for that interest. Alan, I'd like to start with you. What organizations do you belong to and volunteer your time to? So really, I want to know what's important to you.
The primary service that I do volunteer for is the Hagerstown Fire Department. We're considered a volunteer fire department, although we are paid monetary for calls, just for, just general compensation. But I do volunteer my time. This October will be my ninth year in service on the department. Both my father and grandfather have been there, so I really enjoy the opportunity that they gave me to be in an experience like that. And worked my way up from just a back stepper, as they say, and now I'm captain of the department. So I take leadership very serious in that position, because it is, after all, handling life and death situations on a daily basis for people. And other than that, I also volunteer for Boy Scouts of America in various service, both to the troops located there in Hagerstown, but also to the district, which is included in Wayne County and a few other counties around the area. So I think, out of those two, and I've always enjoyed service to my community. That's why I became a teacher. That's why I became a firefighter. And I enjoy giving back to people. And I think that is in the role of a Town Council member, caring for the people, looking after them and their needs. And I think safety would be one of those issues that I really care about, being both on the fire department and school.
Thank you. Brian, what about you? What are your interests and what organizations do you belong to? And if you have opportunities to volunteer, what is that?
I have been a part of the Hagerstown Optimist Club for a little over 15 years. And at one time have been both second vice, vice, and president of that club. Of course, that club is very active in all the youth throughout the community there in many different aspects. One thing when I was president that I was very proud of, and it continues today, we all know about Read Across America. And that year, as president, we implemented, where we gave each child in the elementary school a book fitting for their age. And the club has continued to do that throughout the years, and I think that's a good vital role there. Also have been a member of the New Testament Church of Christ, church there for over 25 years. I've been active there in many things, building programs, leadership roles. I work with the junior high, high school youth for over 24 years. And currently am adult study school teacher there as well. So been very active in that church role there, very important to me and my family there. Also for, and I've been thinking, probably for over 10 years, I've also sat on the Hagerstown Plan Commission and have worked there on the comprehensive plan. I've done a lot of things with that. I was the president of, I've been the president, or was the president, I think, for six years of the Plan Commission there, but this year I've stepped down from that. So that would probably be the three community roles that I've been involved in.
Okay. I guess the next set of questions, we really want to dig into your thoughts on how you can have a positive impact as a representative for your community. So Alan, we'll start with you. What do you feel like the Town Council, ultimately, what's their responsibility? What does the Town Council do?
At the local level, you know, the Town Council is responsible for the town itself. And we know that at the small community level, that is where people can really be engaged in civil service and public service. And I think that is really where voters get the opportunity to see their hand at work, is at the local level. And I think that our Town Council does a very good job in providing the various services that we have for our community. And I think overall, the responsibility of a Town Council member is to have a vested interest in all aspects, whether that is from public safety to the construction that we know is going on right now through Hagerstown that is a headache for most people, but we know that the long-term goal of that is very positive for our community. So I think they have to take a vested interest in as much or as many people's views as possible, because the people at that level can see the opportunities and the ability of the Town Council to do some work.
Okay. Brian, next question for you. You've been on Town Council, you mentioned, I think, six years now. So that's given you some time. What would you say your vision is for Hagerstown? Not really where we've been, but where is Hagerstown going? What's your vision?
Well, I think that's a good question. I think you have to kind of understand where your town is and how it fits in the demographic area where it's located. And what I think has been a great help is that the Town Council has worked very close to the Planning Commission on the comprehensive plan, which sets out the goes and objectives of where you want your town to go into the future. And I would say that, you know, we want, we're always looking, as far as the Town Council, to cover all the areas that Alan, you know, mentioned. That's very important. But also to have a clue or an idea of what you want your town to look like, what kind of amenities you want it to have, what kinds of things support your community, and how can you support that. One example being the school. The school is very important in our community. The school helps us as a community, but we as Town Council in a town, how can we support the school and those different types of things that we have in our community? And so, you know, as technology moves forward and as things, as the way we look as a town definitely has to change. You just cannot stay the same. You have to move forward, so whether that be technology. The other thing that is a great, I think, interest to our town as we look at providing opportunities is not everybody has to drive to work every day. You know, you can work at an off location, you can work at home. And to make sure that our town provides those types of opportunities too. So, you know, it's all about quality living, making sure that we have jobs there for people to work at, whether that be in the retail sector, whether that be in the industrial sector, making sure that everything is zoned properly, that allows those opportunities to come in for our area to continue to grow in all those areas.
Okay. You covered a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Alan, if you were elected, what would be your very first priority?
I'm thinking, you know, I'd like to make a shout-out to WCTV, because I love having the Town Councils taped and available for home viewing, because that is a great opportunity when, you know, some of us that have rush days can sit down and record and be able to see what that is. And I think for our community, the first step to look at is, as Brian mentioned a little bit, how do we see our community? Community is really at the heart of the local sector, and Hagerstown has a lot of opportunities available to show that off. We have a very rich heritage. And I think for people to kind of stand up and take a look at that, to be able to see what opportunities are available to them, and see just how well our community runs and operates, and the heritage that can be brought out. So I would like to take the first step in looking at, you know, kind of doing, and this is being the first time in an office, or first opportunity to have that, would be to kind of just sit back and take it all in. See what's there, see what's available, and then make some steps toward the future.
Okay. The next set of questions I would like to ask, actually, I've spoken with some of the local residents in Hagerstown. So some of these questions are what they want to hear. They want to know how you would answer this. So I'm going to leave this open, and either one of you can answer. So one resident has asked, or actually made the statement, downtown is landlocked. How can the business district be expanded? So either of you, how do you respond to that?
Well, they are right. I mean, it's, Hagerstown is kind of unique in the sense that we, within the city limits, we have a very large floodplain area, and it does kind of limit us to what, how we can develop the downtown. But I would say that we're always looking for opportunities, if there is a opportunity to enhance the looks and the quiteness of the downtown, where it would draw people to come in and to want to do business in the downtown. We're very interested in making sure that that happens. The other thing that we're always looking for, the one thing that kind of hurts us is our parking situation. So we're very aware of that, and we are looking at a couple of opportunities currently that might address, address that issue, where we can have more parking, so the downtown is a little less cluttered, so people can make access to the downtown area a little better.
Do you have anything to add to that, Alan?
I think like most small communities, you know, Main Street at one time was the center of the town, and it was where all the thrievance was. And I am happy to say that I think Hagerstown is fortunate in having businesses in the downtown, and business leaders that are very passionate about ensuring that the downtown gets publicity and gets seen. And I think that the Town Council has done a great job in working with those business leaders and working with some of those businesses and the various programs they do. I know we have a hometown Christmas every December that really highlights some of those downtown businesses. I know right now, we're going through the process of, or have in place the process of, is it, Hagerstown, what's the down?
Oh, the businesses, the heart of-
Yeah, the heart of Hagerstown.
Heart of Hagerstown. And also, as Alan mentioned, that the town, a couple of years ago, received the designation of Main Street, to receive that designation from the state, that we had the Main Street designation, which opens up some opportunities for us as well as we move forward with some of the businesses.
So where did that designation come from? Is that part of Okra?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to actually come back around to that in a moment. The next question, this is going to be probably a harder one for you, and obviously, there's going to be a lot of thoughts on both sides of this question. In terms of job creation and manufacturing growth and development in the Hagerstown community, I've heard that there's been an idea proposed that, what if Hagerstown were to extend sewer and water to the I-70 corridor? So obviously, if that were to happen, the goal would then be to have industry on the Highway 1 corridor. So I guess my first question is, do you agree with that proposal?
I think that, working along with the EDC, that any opportunity that we could do to develop that area would be positive for our community, and the surrounding area as That conversation of running the water and sewer out there has been one that's been talked about. There's a lot of details that have to be looked at before that's done. And then, but we understand that for that area to develop, they will have to have services. And with that interstate there, you know, the services, I'm not saying you can't go under it, but I think we would be a viable option to look at providing those services to that area if it would be developed.
Okay. What is the current capacity of the treatment plant that you have now? Anybody know?
I can't tell you the exact capacity, but that would be one limiting factor that one would have to look at. And that's why you have to work alongside with the EDC and those, what types of businesses are looking at coming in there, what is going to be their discharging volume, and whether our plant could handle those types of discharges that they might put out. The water wouldn't be such, you know, wouldn't be such an issue.
Right.
You're watching InFocus on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. This is our first InFocus Candidate Forum. Alan Bullock, Brian Longbonds are candidates for Hagerstown Town Council. Brian Ballinger is asking most of the questions, because he's a resident there, so he's had a chance to talk to a number of people and get questions. But if you have questions for them, you can jump in, 973-8587. You can send us a question through Twitter, @WCTVinfo, or send us a comment on our Facebook page.
Okay. So Brian, you just mentioned engaging the EDC. So my next question, because the Town Council, if I understand correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, you would probably need to consider annexing some of the outlying areas of Hagerstown. Is that correct?
My understanding, and it's just my understanding, I believe that to run your services through there, you have to have that ownership of that, so many feet away from that, one way or the other. So I think that is one project that you would have to work through, yes.
Okay. And this will be for either of you. Are you in favor of annexing any outlying areas of Hagerstown? I guess this is a guess, no?
I would say that if the development is there, yes, I would be in favor.
Actually, before you go into that, Brian, I want, maybe be a little more specific for me, please.
However unfortunate it may be, you know, people that see that as a great opportunity also have to look at the other side of that. We know that the capacity of the water treatment plant and that, but also the economics. We're going through a major downtown fix right now with our water lines and that, and we know that that's costing in excess, but within our means. And I think for people to want that opportunity, they often have to understand that with that comes a cost, not only in the economics, but in the possibility of annexing those parts. So if development is there, if we're rich for it, and again, if working with the EDC, if they present the opportunities that, hey, we have these people that are willing to move in, I think that would be a very viable option down the road.
Okay. Thank you. Brian?
I think that there's, there has to be a purpose to want to annex. You just don't do it to just say we're going to annex them. So we have, you know, there could be a situation where we have residents that are outside the city limits, that might be because of some reason, the need of our services. And so then you have to look at, you know, can we provide those services? What's the cost of providing those services? What's the return of providing those services? And does it benefit the resident, along with the town, to do that annexation? And so, I just don't think you can say yes or no, but there would be situations where I think it would need to be considered. And I think when you consider annexation, it should be good for the resident, and it should be good for the town as well.
Okay.
If I can follow up on that real quickly. Based on, you're both running for Town Council, so I assume you've had a chance to talk to a number of residents. What is the general feel that you're getting for how your residents feel about the growth of Hagerstown? There are some communities that size, who, like the size they are, want to stay quaint, small, you know what I'm talking about, relatively small towns, some who understand or who feel the need for growth, whether it be through business or residential. Based on the conversations that you've had, what's the general feeling that you're getting as far as how the residents feel for what Hagerstown should be five years, 10 years, 20 years down the line?
I would say that from our, from the perspective that I've had in just general conversations with people, is that, you know, we are a town that is growing older, however unfortunate that may be. You know, there are a lot of small-town communities that the population is aging out. And I think for development to really occur, and for people to be excited, so to speak, about that development, there has to be, not an influx, but a moving in of a younger generation, of a generation that's hungry for expansion and hungry for those new opportunities.
I would say that the town has, through the zoning and everything, has positioned the town where it has the possibility to grow, you know? Because, of course, our Main Street is an extension of 38, US 38, and of course, we have Route 1 that comes on, and we're located very close to the interstate. So I do believe that there are, I think, what I hear, people would like to see Hagerstown grow in the right way. You know, they would like the right things, the right businesses there, the right opportunities there, and to make sure that we don't lose the heritage that the town so richly has, and that we don't lose the community, as the community would understand it. But I think everybody understands the importance that we have to grow. I think it's hard to maintain. You're either growing, or you're declining. And it's very hard to say the same. And I think, me being a resident as well, whether I'm on Town Council or not, I want to make sure my town is growing, and 50 years from now, it still serves a viable purpose for that area. And so I think, I think everybody would like to see growth and make sure that Hagerstown continues to move ahead, and it's a destination that people would want to come to, whether it's to visit, whether it's to live, or whether it's to work. And we just have to try to decide what fits our community, what is right for our community, because we have some limitations, you know, that we have to work through.
Do you feel like Hagerstown is facing any blight problems or issues within the city limits?
I know that, speaking as a new resident, I mean, a new home, I think the Town Council has done a great job in the past with the funds that have been available to them to take care of some of those bright, or blight problems, excuse me. But to this point, I, as a resident, I don't see any blight problems that really exist.
Yeah. Like Alan said, we was, received a grant for, to reduce blight homes, and we have utilized that. Matter of fact, we had one left, and we're working diligently to see if we can't fulfill all of the grant that we was given. I believe it, I believe all towns, including Hagerstown, you have to constantly look at your town, and I heard a statistic one time, that every 100 years or so, buildings and houses and things have to turn over in a town to stay up what people are looking for. So I believe you're always going to have to be aware that there's probably a home that has served its purpose, or hasn't been kept up well enough, and it'll have to be addressed in whichever way it can be. And it has to be safe. And so I think on Town Council, we need to be aware of that. We need to drive around our community and understand if we have issues or problems, and how do we address them.
What happens to the lot that remains when a home is, I will just say, taken down? It goes through the blight elimination program. What happens to that lot?
I'll answer that. There's two, in that program, there was, the homeowner had two options. One option was to retain the lot, so they received X amount of dollars that would help them to remove the home from that. And then, once that home is removed and the property is put back in, you know, in a satisfied way, leveled and grassed and put back, then that homeowner would own that lot, would continue to own that lot. The other half of that, if the homeowner did not want to own that lot, then that lot, through the blight- through the blight program, would be bought by the town. And I'll try to get this right, but it had to kind of go through the trustee, back through the town for that to be, in, in the legal way that the state set that up. The town has to retain ownership of that property for a certain period of time. Once that's done, Town Council would look at the properties and determine whether there is a use that the city could have for it. And I would be happy to explain, the one property that the town did retain sets adjacent to the fire department. And we see some value for the fire department and for their needs to possibly retain that property, just for the fire department and the use of that. The other property that was retained, we would like to see it go back out into the community and a home be built on it and a new residence move into our community for that.
Right. Okay. This question comes from someone that I've spoken with, wanting to know, do you feel like the Town Council has communicated well to the business community and the residents in terms of your decision-making process, the vision that you have? So is there open communication or do you feel like there has been a, a lack of communication? So that comes from a Hagerstown resident. Not accusing, just, we just want to know what your thought is. Be honest, Alan, you're hesitating.
I think from conversations that I've had with people and just the, the general, you know, kind of noise on the street, I think that there is a lack of communication. But I think that falls a little bit to our citizens as well. Because we, you know, the council has open meetings that people can come up and attend and voice their concern. We have a great local newspaper that every time a Town Council takes place, that those informational bits are spread through the town. So I think though with, not necessarily with the council itself, but maybe it'd be some of the subsidiaries of the town that are having some communication issues, especially with our business downtown. And I think working relationship with both the council and the businesses will help that future and that, that comprehensive plan that we've been talking about.
So is that the heart of Hagerstown that you're referring to?
Yeah.
I guess, you know, I sit on Town Council, I don't know that you can communicate too much. I mean, I don't know. So can you always communicate more? You probably can. But we are pretty blessed and like Alan said, you know, there's a lot of avenues, this being one of them, where they can watch Town Council, I mean, at their convenience, whenever they want, and understand what Town Council's doing. We would enjoy having more people come to Town Council and be a part of it and be interactive with it. And there's always a time for the public to speak and ask questions and concerns during those. So we're always willing to do that. And I know myself, when some people approach me, we always try to, I always try to address their concerns. But I'm like Alan, it takes two people to communicate, you know? Can you always improve? Sure, you can probably always improve and you should always try to improve. But people have to communicate back too, as well.
You're watching the in focus candidate forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11, speaking with candidates running for Hagerstown Town Council, Alan Bullock, Brian Longbonds. Brian Ballinger is asking questions and doing a great job. We're almost there, we're over halfway done. We still have time to get your question, if you have a question that you would like to get in @WCTVinfo or give us a call 973-8587 or send a comment on our Facebook page.
Okay. Let's shift focus a little bit. Brian, you actually mentioned this briefly in an earlier comment, quality of life and quality of space.
Yeah.
How important is that to you? And then I really want you to address for us, how does that topic or this subject tie into going beyond just maintaining the population, but as you mentioned, Alan, growing the population, engaging the younger generation? So I'd really be interested in understanding what you think about the term quality of life, quality of space, what you think of that, what does that look like for us? And then if, if you are engaged in that conversation, how do you implement that in Hagerstown? And this is a really broad question.
Being an educator and with the opportunity of school choice, we have seen over the last couple of years, an in and out movement, a very vivid fluctuation in our school system. And I think that the quality of life in Hagerstown is, to me, fantastic. As a resident, we have very great amenities. We have very fantastic public services and we have, as I've made, as I've stated before, that very rich heritage. And there are opportunities to catch those people, especially I see that at the high school, of the opportunity to catch families on the move. They may be living in one area, sending their students to another. So we've got the student, but how can we engage the whole family? How can we bring them into the community? You know, maybe as a visit, but also for that long-term goal of seeing the, the town as what it is and for the purpose of coming and settling. And I think we have fantastic opportunities for people to move in. We always have, and driving around town, there's always houses being worked on, being fixed up, open for new families to move in, whether to rent or to buy. So I think there is a great opportunity that exists. And it's important to showcase Hagerstown, as we've said through the various means that we have, as a city for, you know, being located where it is. It is great for, you know, the local work environment, but also to catch those that can travel and can commute to various other businesses around the county and even around this part of the state. So I think seeing how we can improve the town in ways that bring not only the young generation, but that, that mid-generation that may be in that stage of life where they're, you know, turning over new leaf, so to speak, and have that opportunity. And I think we're really blessed with the, the amenities and the opportunities that are given in Hagerstown.
Quality of life is a big term.
It is.
It encompasses a lot of things and it means different things to different folks. And we have a lot of great amenities already in our community that helps people quality of life. We probably have some that we would like to improve upon or move towards. One example that we, that we have talked a lot about that affects one person's quality of life, somebody lives in Hagerstown all their life. And then all of a sudden, they become a senior and then they become a senior that need assistance with their living. And we have a void in, in Hagerstown for that type of facility to help them in that time of their life and to give them a good quality of life to that. Many people live there all their life and they have to move to Richmond or they have to move to Newcastle or to another area to find that type of facility to facilitate that time of their life. So that is something that's been discussed. Of course, you have to have people that have interest to come in and to look at that and want to develop that. But, but we understand we have a void there, that, that could improve that, our seniors' quality of life and allow them to stay in Hagerstown throughout their life. So that's one part of quality of life. Like Alan said, as you have people that are active in their active ages, you know, how do we continually connect Hagerstown to, to things that have an interest in? Maybe an example to that is, is the Cardinal Walkway. I mean, it's a, it's a great facility. It's just north of Hagerstown. Lots of people in our community like to walk and jog and ride bikes and wouldn't it be neat if we could have a way to connect that in a safe way for our children and for our adults, where they could safely get to that? And, and all of a sudden, we've connected Hagerstown to that great amenity that we have in our community and in the state. So, you know, I think we, you know, we have some great parks. You know, we have great parks. I think we've done a great job there and lots of opportunities for our kids. And I think the other thing that's been really exciting is some of our heritage that Alan talked about is the Nettle Creek Players. The last two years have come back to, to Hagerstown and, and that's a part of quality of life that people have missed. And, you know, last year it was on Main Street, but because of our situation on Main Street, it went up to Byer Park there by the library. And they were nearly sold out every, every performance. And, you know, so we look, and the city's been involved to help the Nettle Creek Players, you know, have that opportunity. And how can we grow that? And that brings a quality of life. And so you have to continue to grow on that. I mean, we can just do so many things, but I think it is important to Town Council and I think it's important to our leaders of our community that we're aware of that, where we're very strong in it and where we have some voids and where we can improve in that.
Can I do a follow-up to that? I just want to see if both of you can talk for just a minute about how you make, as a councilperson, the decision to put taxpayer money toward that quality of life piece that you both see as very important. As, as you mentioned, construction costs, repairing sewer lines, things of that nature begin to suck more and more money out. You ask your, your residents for more money for those things. So how do you, how do you create that balance in your mind of where to put taxpayer money into those and where not to?
This being my first experience and my first opportunity if elected as official, is one thing that I would really seek help with, I think. And I'm not afraid to ask help in an area like that because that's something that I'm not familiar with. And so I think collectively, you know, we're, in my mind, as a team, as the Town Council could be called, could work together and cooperate and really figure out those better solutions. So I think as a team would be the best place to find those solutions and that balance.
You know, some of that, some of the quality of life can be improved by maybe private sector money coming in, where it's, it's not tax dollars that do that. Now, you might have to provide, like you said, the infrastructure for them to put a facility there. To maybe give you an idea, where the Nettle Creek Players had to come in and, you know, provide a quality of life. When the park was built there, the plans for the electrical, for the electrical services from that park was not totally completed because there wasn't really need, any need to put that in there. But because of the need of the Nettle Creeks and what they were going to need, we just finished supplying the electrical power in that park that was originally going to be put there anyhow and so that the Nettle Creeks could perform there. So it was pretty easy to prioritize that because it had been already planned in the past. We just didn't have a need at that time, so we didn't spend the taxpayers' dollars at that time. But then when the need become aware to us that they needed it, we just followed through with that. So sometimes it's prioritizing it and, you know, sometimes you just have to say no because you can't justify spending the taxpayers' dollars. And we always, especially in some of the quality of life, there's a lot of competition, as you well know. There's all kinds of grants and opportunities out there, but you have to write for them. You're competing with them and they're, it's easy to say, oh, just go get a grant. Trust me, we write for those grants all the time. And, but you don't always receive those grants. They're very, very competitive. And one thing that you have in a small community like we have and where we have a, a small support employee staff is having enough time and abilities to write for all those grants and locate all those grants and, and how do you do all that? So we're always aware, we're always looking, we're always trying to apply for the ones that fit for us, that make sense, that would fit a need that we have. We just don't write to be writing to say that we have something. But if we see a need for it and there's a grant out there that would fulfill one of our, our hopes or a part of our comprehensive plan, we definitely apply for it and, and try to get that. And some of them will be 100% and some of those will be a matching, just depending on what they might be.
I want to come back around to a statement you made, Brian. You were speaking about connectivity. You mentioned the Cardinal Greenway and how it would be a great benefit to the residents of Hagerstown to have that. It seems to me like that would be a challenge fiscally. So how do you get that done? So let me throw this idea out and I want, and I do realize as councilman, you, there are limitations to the authority that you, you have. So first of all, I'll just ask, and I want a yes, no answer. Are you in favor of the proposed food and beverage tax? Or are you familiar with the food and beverage tax?
I am not in favor of how it has been proposed at this time.
And I'm not familiar with it, so until research, I would say no.
Okay. I'm not sure if maybe this is the, the correct forum to go into that. I'll, I think maybe I'll just leave that with the way that you've, you've answered. That's probably maybe another question for another day. I'm not sure that it necessarily pertains to Hagerstown Town Council, but I think it is an issue that certainly we at the Chamber of Commerce, we want to pursue it further and understand what, what, what did the Hager, or not only Hagerstown, but all of the Wayne County residents, what, what do we think about the food and beverage tax and also what can it accomplish?
Can I, can I go ahead and I'll take host prerogative?
Absolutely.
You, you kind of opened the door where, where I kind of have to go back to that. As it, your statement was, as it's proposed, you're not in favor of it, correct?
Well, right now, it would be my understanding that it's not even really being proposed at this time or it's not, it's not being pursued right at this time on the ballot. So I don't, I've, that's a difficult question. I mean, that changes a little bit. I was addressed on that six or eight months ago. So what does it look like today? I don't know. Is it even, is it even an initiative that, I don't think it's on the ballot? I, I don't, so I don't know that I'm of an authority to tell you right or wrong, but what I heard six months ago, I had, I had concerns about how it was being proposed.
That's fair. And again, that's a broad question that probably doesn't directly affect Hagerstown Town Council. So I want to go back to, you, you mentioned the Main Street designation. Can you, could you explain that? And Brian, you might have more information on that, but I want to lead this into partnerships, how we network with other groups, how we network with Heart of Hagerstown, but even more so with the Office OKRA. It actually stands for Office of Community and Rural Affairs. So what partnerships do we have within Hagerstown where we're working with those from the outside, helping us understand what are our needs? How do we plan strategically? And then how do we raise the funds to implement the projects that we know will move the community forward?
I'll do my best at this, okay? You, OKRA has certain guidelines and standards for a community to receive the Main Street designation. And I don't know that I could list every one of those to you, but they come in through meetings with the business people, the business community on Main Street there in Hagerstown. And the Plan Commission was also involved in that, through that meetings and, and through the applications that the businesses had to, to do. OKRA felt that our town did meet the guidelines and the specifications to get the Main Street designation. So that's, that's really just us contacting them, saying, you know, we think we need to be considered, having some meetings. we think we need to be considered, having some meetings. And I will tell you that it's imperative that the businesses take control of that process, that application, and moving through all that process with OKRA. It's not so much town council, though. We was, I think, the Plan Commission and Town Council was very supportive in helping the Heart of Hagerstown, which at that time, they didn't even have that title. But we helped the businesses and encouraged the businesses to continue through that process. And it's a pretty lengthy process. And I want to give our businesses a lot of credit for seeing that through, because that is a huge task that they took on in their spare time. So they did that. Now, to answer your second question, how do we tie into that? Once again, that's a little bit more complicated than it, than it sounds. You, a lot of the OKRA ruling community programs is based upon community income averages. And so you have to run a survey in your community to understand where your community is, to see if you even qualify for the programs that they might have out there that you're, that you're interested in, whatever that program might be. And it's normally to develop or enhance your Main Street or that small community around your Main Street. I can tell you, setting on the Plan Commission, because I was the president of it, we have done two of those surveys. And this is a good thing and it can be a bad thing. Hagerstown really struggles to fit the income levels that OKRA is looking for to apply. I'm not saying for all of them, but for many of their grants, we just do not qualify, because our income level in Hagerstown is too high. And we run that survey, I believe, five years ago. And we actually run that survey in 2017 as well, just last year. We run it again. So that doesn't mean we're eliminated from everything, but it does make it a little bit more difficult to tie into some of those programs that you're talking about.
Right, right. Is there a plan to help retain businesses and support businesses in the downtown? I know we've already discussed this, but I really want to know more about the relationship and the partnering with Heart of Hagerstown. Because obviously, the downtown businesses and all of the business in the Hagerstown community, they play an active part in creating the jobs, making sure that we maintain a tax base. So what partnership, what relationships have been developed in supporting them?
Maybe I can address this, man, it wouldn't be fair.
We're down to our last five minutes.
Yeah. The, like I said, the Heart of Hagerstown probably, I think, has been in place two years, really effectively two years.
Right.
We feel that, and I can't state strongly enough, is the Heart of Hagerstown has to be the businesses that initiate that and direct that. And, and, you know, there has to be that line between the businesses and government on that. So how we can, how I look at it and on Town Council is, and also the Plan Commission, because I think they really tie very close together, is communicating and working together to make sure that we're moving in the direction that the businesses and that the town wants to move in so that we grow together or it looks different together. And I think we have a great example. I mean, everybody in Hagerstown knows we're doing the infrastructure down Main Street. I mean, it's the water currently now and we hope to do the electricity next year. And if what we have been told is correct, there is a very good possibility in 2020 that the state will repave our Main Street as they come down 38. And that becomes the state project, not a town project. So we hope that we have all that in place, a new Main Street. But in that, the comprehensive plan, working with Town Council and the Heart of Hagerstown, we are starting to have meetings and talking about, okay, when we get all this down underneath the ground and what do we want Main Street to look like? What would we like the look of it to be? You know, from lighting to wavefinders to frontages of buildings, you know? What do we want our town to look like? When people come in, what are they going to see? And so it becomes very important that we, we communicate. We, I think it's more than communicate, we work together. Though they kind of got to take the lead to it, we work together and try to have a common goal and try to accomplish that together. And so when it's done, we have this beautiful downtown Hagerstown for our businesses, where people want to come in and shop and eat and buy gas and whatever on Main Street and enjoy their time there.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time this evening. Alan Bullock, Brian Longbonz, running for Hagerstown Town Council at large. Donnie Benedict is another member currently sitting on council who is also running that seat. So there are three people running for two seats. Want to thank you for taking the time to put your name on the ballot. Obviously, not everyone is willing to do that and answer the questions and potentially give up the evenings, the time that it takes. So thank you for spending that time with us and for even being there to potentially have that involved in your life. Brian, thank you for being here and for gathering those questions for the gentlemen. If you have not yet registered to vote, want to remind you that that can be done up until October 9th. Voter registration going on, 301 East Bain Street in Richmond. Also, register to vote by checking your status at indianavoters.gov. If you are around the Richmond Farmer's Market, don't forget, voter registration takes place there Saturday mornings from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Our InFocus Candidate Forums are just kicking off. We'll be back next week, speaking with candidates running for Town Council in Fountain City. Bill Engel will be representing the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce and joining me. And then, as we go through the slides that you see there, you'll see that the weeks that we have coming up. If you missed this program and want to see it again, it will be aired tonight at 10:30, tomorrow night at 8:00 p.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., Sunday at 8:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. And audio of this program can also be heard Sunday morning at 6:00 a.m. on G101.3 as well as 100.9 ESPN, WKBV. Couple of quick items to remind you of. Centerville Archway Days is taking place this weekend in Maplewood Park, fun for the whole family, car show, fireworks, food and crafts, vendors, and a whole lot more. Hype Night at the museum, explore the museum and win lots of free food and fun. That's at the Levi and Catherine Coffin House on U.S. 27 North. Thank you very much for watching this edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum, being made possible by Whitewater Community Television and our partners, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. Get out and enjoy this weekend. See you next week.